Call the meeting to order. Will you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a roll call, please.
Counselor Clements.
Excused.
Counselor Landjevan.
I guess he's delayed, I don't know.
Counselor Livingston.
Present.
Counselor Marocucci.
Present.
Counselor McDonald.
Present.
Counselor Nicola.
Present.
Counselor Regis.
Excused.
Counselor Spinelli.
Present.
Counselor Vandal.
Present.
Six here.
Thank you. Agenda item number three, consider and accept the council minutes of Monday, November 21st, 2011.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous. Agenda item number four, Subcommittee Reports, A General Government, Counselor Spinelli.
I have no report, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. B is DPW, Counselor Vandal.
No report, but we have a meeting scheduled for next Tuesday, the 14th, 7:00 PM, in the Rice Conference Room. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counselor. C is Education and Human Services, and there was a meeting, I'm going to read the notes. A meeting of the EHS Subcommittee was held on Monday, November 28th, in the Rice Conference Room. In attendance were Chairwoman Clements, citizen members Holly Cristo and Michael Janes. Also in attendance were myself, Counselor Livingston, Town Manager Christopher Clark, Estelle Coette, and Roger Coette. Chairwoman Clements called the meeting to order at 7:00. Agenda item number one, discuss and vote to accept the Senior Tax Abatement Program according to Scenario 6 for 2012. Mr. Clark discussed the Senior Tax Abatement Program. The state waives any taxes due, but the IRS requires that Medicare tax and OBRa deduction be processed through the payroll system. The changes are an increase in the hours from 68 to 80 hours per year, the rate increases from $7.35 per hour to $7.50 per hour, the gross abatement amount goes from $500 to $600. Medicare and OBRa will be withheld, making the net abatement from $500 to $546.30. A motion was made by Holly Cristo and seconded by Michael Janes with a favorable recommendation to council to accept the Senior Tax Abatement Program according to Scenario 6 for 2012. Vote by a show of hands, all in favor, 3 to nothing. Agenda item number two, discuss and vote to accept the proposal of Thompson and Litchner on a time and material basis for an air filtration and water penetration window testing. Discussion was held on the scope of work to be done for air filtration and water penetration window testing. This, by the way, is for the new middle high school. The cost is covered under the original contract. Mr. Clark said the school committee has unanimously approved this proposal. A motion was made by Michael Janes and seconded by Holly Cristo with a favorable recommendation to council to accept the proposal of Thompson and Litchner with an initial not to exceed value of $16,000 for an air infiltration and water penetration window testing. Vote by a show of hands, all in favor, 3 to nothing. Motion to adjourn was made by Holly Cristo, seconded by Michael Janes. Vote by a show of hands, all in favor, 3 to nothing, and the meeting adjourned at 7:25.
Could I just ask for, it should be School Building Committee instead of School Committee?
Yes, excuse me. The, Mr. Clark said that it was the School Building Committee that had unanimously approved this proposal. That's a correction on that. Okay. All right, and I don't know if there is any, it doesn't appear there's any meeting scheduled. D, Planning and Development, Counselor Livingston.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Meeting of the Planning and Development Subcommittee was held on Monday, November 28th, 2011, in the Rice Conference Room. In attendance were Chairman Livingston, Subcommittee Members Counselor Spinelli, Counselor Clements, and Citizen Member Evelyn Petrelli. Also in attendance were Counselor Nicola, Town Manager Clark, Cassandra Ackley, Holly Cristo, Estelle Coette, and Roger Coette. Citizen Member George Parent was excused. Chairman called the meeting to order at 6:30 PM. Agenda item one, vote to approve CDBG grant contract for the downtown sidewalk region. Motion is made by Counselor Clements, seconded by Evelyn Petrelli, to approve the CDBG grant contract for the downtown sidewalk region. Discussion was held on the quotes received, Fussin' and Neal Incorporated's low bidder for the review, survey, and draft plans for the side rock deterioration region. Motion was made by Evelyn Petrelli and seconded by Counselor Clements with a favorable recommendation to the council to amend the prior motion to award the contract to Fussin' and Neal Incorporated for preliminary design engineering services for reconstruction of the unique Main Street sidewalks in the downtown area in the amount of $8,850. Vote by a show of hands, all in favor, 3 to 0. Motion to adjourn was made by Evelyn Petrelli, seconded by Counselor Clements. Vote by a show of hands, all in favor. Chairman Livingston adjourned the meeting at 6:45 PM. Respectfully submitted, Evelyn Rivera, Recording Clerk. I have no meeting scheduled at this time.
Thank you, Counselor. E, Protection of Persons and Property, Counselor Landjevan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have no meeting minutes to read, but I do have a meeting scheduled for December 15th, Thursday night, 7:00, to discuss police and fire department vacancies. Names will be brought forward for us to review, and that's all I have at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda item number five is Chairwoman's announcements, that would be me. I have no announcements at this time. Six, Town Managers' announcements, Mr. Clark.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have a few things this evening. The first one is, it's coming up on that time of year again, or we're at that time of year again. We do have, and this was in the newspaper, the Southbridge Winter Parking Ban begins, or began, on December 1st. Alternate side parking will go into effect last Thursday, Thursday, December 1st, and will remain in effect until April 1st, 2012. Alternate side parking is in effect all day, beginning at 7:00 PM. An example is given, on Thursday, December 1st, 2010, all cars should be parked on the odd side of the street, beginning at 7:00 PM until 7:00 PM Friday, December 2nd. At 7:00 PM on Friday, December 2nd, cars should be moved to the even side of the street until 7:00 PM on Saturday, December 3rd, in which they're moved again. Just one of the things in regards to this, I know this sounds like it's somewhat onerous, but it does give us the opportunity to do snow plowing operations in a more effective manner, and it gives us the opportunity to open the streets. So it is something that we do enforce. There will be courtesy tickets, I think, given over the next couple of weeks, and then we will commence with the real enforcement. We do have these regulations, are available in the Town Clerk's Office at Town Hall. I do believe we also have them on our website, so I would encourage you that if you are a resident of the community or a person that is in an apartment, that you should really make every effort to comply with this so you avoid being ticketed. And if there are specific questions, I know there are snow emergency routes, and if you are on that, you have a different requirement. If you have specific questions, you're encouraged to contact the Department of Public Works at 508-764-5403. And there are snow removal policies for all municipal parking lots as well, so if you're in those areas, I would suggest you look at the website to try to get information on where you can park during snow events. The next item I have is from Margaret Morrissey, the Library Director. There's several programs that are taking place at the Jacob Edwards Library during the month of December. These programs are sponsored by the Friends of the Jacob Edwards Library. On Thursday, December 8th, Little Sparrows, an Australian movie, screening starts at 6:00 PM in the Pioppi Room. On Thursday, December 15th, author Sarah Jo Burke will discuss her book, Don't Think It Hasn't Been Fun, in the Reading Room at 6:30 PM. Ms. Burke and her family toured the U.S. and Canada and were hailed as America's answer to the Australian von Trapp family. On Monday, December 19th, musicians and composer, musician and composer Hunter Foote will present the Holiday Concert, performing his eclectic sampling of music with a holiday theme, and the show will commence on 6:30 PM in the Reading Room. All programs are free, and everyone is welcome to attend. I also received some material today from the Health Director, an announcement, on Saturday, December 17th, a free clinic, a free rabies clinic will be held at the 62 Pleasant Street, the old DPW Garage, between 9:00 AM and 12:00 PM, rain or shine. Please have all dogs and cats on leashes or in crates. The clinic is made possible with a grant from the ASPCA and is sponsored by the Second Chance Animal Shelter and the Town of Southbridge. Just two other items, I do wish, at the last meeting, Councilman Vandal had brought up about the rez, and I thought I was a little bit short with him, and I just wanted to kind of publicly apologize for that. He had asked about, we had an issue relevant to prevailing wage, the work to do, the clubhouse at the rez was $14,000. I did go with the DPW Director to look at that, and we are going to do that work in-house in order to save the taxpayers some funding on that. So that is something that we are doing, and that work is underway. And then also, I passed out at each individual place, I have a request, if we could add an agenda item, Agenda Item 16A, and it would be, vote to amend the FY 2012 Cable Operating Budget from $88,500 to $109,364, and to fund the additional $20,864 as a transfer from the Cable Operating Special Revenue Account, per the Town Council vote of October 24th, 2011, to reorganize cable operations. At that meeting on October 24th, I should have done three things, we did two things. One was, we reorganized the cable operations, we set the budget at the $109,364, but what we should have also done was transferred the balance, the additional money, the $20,864, from the Cable Operating Special Revenue Account into the Town's General Fund, in which to meet the obligations of that budget that the council previously voted. So I would ask that, I believe this is just a housekeeping item, the operation, the reorganization's already been voted, the budget's already been voted, this is simply the transfer of the differential in the funding. We did ask Department of Revenue if we could have some leeway, and they requested that we have a specific vote on that. So that's why that came up, we were hoping that this would not have to come up, but it is part of the budget, not the budget discussion, but the budget cleanup items that we have this evening. And that concludes my comments. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Okay. Agenda item number seven, we have a presentation. I'd like to introduce Roxana Gomez from the Centro Americas, the Latino Elder Program.
And she is joined by Juan Gomez as well, Madam Chair.
Good evening. Town Manager, thank you very much for the opportunity, members of the council. My name is Juan Gomez, and I'm the Executive Director of Centro Las Americas in Worcester, Massachusetts. Centro Las Americas provides an array of services and as the, for the Latino community and immigrant communities in central Massachusetts, and now expanding to Worcester County, including Southbridge. We're very happy, pleased, and thankful for the offer or commitment that you've made to the programs that we will offer, and I'll explain in a little bit. Roxana Gomez, no relation, works with us at Centro Las Americas as a case manager for our Latino Elder Program, which is a comprehensive program that provides socialization, recreation, opportunities for folks to get information about their health, about how to protect their identity, how to be safe in their homes, but we also provide a number of other things, including some case management, meals which are provided in Worcester by Elder Services of Worcester, transportation which is provided by the Worcester Housing Authority, as well as others in collaboration with our program, and then the medical screenings which are provided by the VNA Care Network and UMass Medical Center. Excuse me. Well, we have, we've thought, looked at the changing demographics in the Town of Southbridge approximately 18 months ago, and when the Town put out the RFP for block grant funding, we submitted a proposal to replicate the program we have in the city of Worcester, here in the Town of Southbridge. Now, one of the things that you, that will be different in the Town of Southbridge from the program that we have in Worcester is that there's going to be very little need for transportation for these seniors, and the reason for that is because we were privy to information in terms of folks, we got the names of a lot of the seniors, Latino seniors that live in the Town of Southbridge, and we did a survey, we conducted a survey, of what would be some of the challenges that they would face in accessing our program. And interestingly enough, transportation was not one of those challenges, but we're very happy that our program is going to be starting January 5th. We have made connections here in the Town of Southbridge, both with the clergy, Father Sorsinia and Father.
Peter Joyce.
Peter Joyce. Peter Joyce. We also are working with Tri Valley Elder Services, and are sort of working, playing phone tag with VNA as well as Harrington Hospital, but we believe that once everything is in place, we'll be able to replicate the program almost exactly as we have it in Worcester. And I will tell you what the benefits of that program are. We have found through the years, and we've conducted surveys, year after year, that the seniors who participate in this program are less apt to fall into depression, which then has a whole host of other issues, both medical, safety, et cetera. And it creates additional costs to the Town, to the State, and to our different programs. So, working in collaboration with resources already in town, with the support from town, and our cultural competence, we believe that this will be an excellent program. We're targeting to serve 35 seniors at the beginning of the program, but we know that in time, as the program progresses and as people hear, that is going to be a good opportunity for folks to participate in, will serve a lot more than that. So, thank you for your support, I appreciate, and would love to take any questions at this point.
Before you go any further, Mr. Gomez, could you please tell everybody where you will be located in Southbridge?
Yes, ma'am. We are going to be, our offices are going to be in the McKinnon Center, but the program itself will take place at the Community Center, in the Southbridge Community Center. And that is a tremendously synergistic opportunity for us, because one of the things that we have found is that at the Community Center, there's activities taking place on Monday, Wednesday, Friday. It's also important to note that the Meals on Wheels, as well as the Congregate Meals take place at the Community Center, and so we're going to use the Center on Tuesdays and Thursdays, providing more opportunity for a community to utilize this tremendous resource. Mike Trombley has been incredible, and we're very thankful for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Buenas tardes, voy a hacer la presentación en español porque hay muchas personas que oyen el canal en español. Lo que dice Juan es que vamos a tener un programa para el grupo de la tercera edad en Southbridge, así como lo tenemos en Worcester, le vamos a ofrecer diferentes actividades y la oportunidad de estar con la misma comunidad, vamos a ofrecerle juegos y servicios para llenar solicitudes de housing o también para las cupones de comida o para llenar solicitudes de seguros de salud. Cualquier cosa vamos a estar abriendo el 5 de enero en el Senior Center de Southbridge. Nos pueden llamar al Centro Las Americas, al 508-798-19020, cualquier otra pregunta estamos para servirle. En general, en resumen, lo que dijo Juan, lo estoy diciendo en español, cualquier cosa estamos para servirle. Gracias.
Thank you.
Any additional questions?
Are there any questions for Mr. Gomez?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and good luck to you. Thank you, Ms. Gomez. Okay. Agenda item number eight, Citizens Forum. Any citizens wishing to come forward, please identify yourself and your address.
My name is Hugh McKinnon, I live at 21 William Street, here in Southbridge. I just have one brief item to address. As I entered the building today, I saw, or this evening, I thought it might be safer to come up the front entrance, because the back entrance was extremely poorly lit. The front doors were locked. Had it not been for the assistance, the kind and thoughtful assistance of a certain ex-employee of this facility, Mr. Paul Zotos, I would not have been able to negotiate my way into these chambers. It would be, I forget that it was me, that area should be lit. And if this is a sign that we're having, we're somehow sticking to the open meeting laws but not making them accessible, maybe we should think again. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Will you please look into that, that side door with the light? Thank you. Anybody else wish to come forward?
Hi.
I'm bringing summer. I'm John McHugh, 49 Main Street, I teach at the high school, and I would just, I'm here tonight to help out, but I just wanted to thank Mr. Clark and the rest of the Town Hall people for taking my student interns for my government class. We had the first group last Wednesday, this Wednesday we'll have another group of three. They had an excellent time. They talked about it for a couple of days, and it's, the point of the learning environment is that the town government is the government that most affects them. They don't see that, or a lot of people don't see that, but we're trying to get the students out there to do that. So, thank you, Mr. Clark.
Thank you, Ms. McHugh. Does anybody else wish to come forward?
James Satilli, 83 Pinedale. This is the third time I'm coming forward to this body to ask them, what have you done to make the lives of the citizens of Southbridge better than before you were elected? I had a chance to get ahold of a copy of the Worcester Business Journal, because I am presently searching for properties for one of my clients, a Singapore-based client, and I saw the profile of Southbridge, and I thought maybe you folks, since we can't rely on our congressional delegation to protect us, we wonder, the people wonder whether or not you folks are protecting us. Southbridge has experienced the decline of population since the year 2000 of 2.88%. Southbridge has an unemployment rate of 10.5%. National unemployment rate is 8.5%. When you take a look at the Southbridge, the source is the Business Journal, the Southbridge Educational System, it's a surprise. The variance of MCAS scores for Southbridge are 69 for English, 52 for math, and 43 for science. We are one of the lowest in central Massachusetts, though in fact, we are the lowest in central Southbridge in fiscal 2010 spent $13,368,000 for each of its 2,204 students. That's a total enrollment. The Southbridge teachers average a salary of $63,000 per year, and they're responsible for 12.1 students for each teacher. But we have one of the lowest STEM考试 scores in the, we have the lowest STEM考试 scores in central Massachusetts. I believe another issue that you folks as our representatives should be aware of, the hidden costs associated with school choice are burying our budget, our education budget, and that has to be a scandal, and I wonder what you folks have done to accommodate that.
Excuse me. This is, this, this sounds like something that really should be brought up in front of the school committee as opposed to the Town Council.
Well, Madam, Madam, I make that choice, since I'm, this is Citizens Forum, I make the choice, not you.
Well, certainly, the answer is that it would be something that we would have to defer to the school committee on.
I'm sure.
Please continue.
I choose to use this forum for that.
That's fine.
Do you mind? Thank you. The amount of tax revenue collected in fiscal year 2011, and what's mandated by our Town Council, was approximately $15,605,900. The residential taxes collected by the Town, the residential taxes, 78.1%. Single-family owner, that's our burden. The taxes collected for the commercial tenants in town, 12.7%. It's a big difference. The homeowner in this town supports this burden, and we wonder whether or not you folks are aware that we should be protected. The property tax rate in Southbridge is 17.14 per thousand. Today, I think today, the prior hearing to this meeting tonight reflected why we have such a high tax rate. It appears to me that as the assessed valuations drop, the taxes increase, and that formula doesn't seem fair at all. Again, I ask the question, what have you folks done to protect the people of Southbridge and to make our lives better than before you were elected? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to come forward?
Hi, my name is Deana Hazard, I'm from 21 Clark Street, here in Southbridge.
Could you please try to speak into the?
I'm sorry, my name is Deana Hazard, and I'm from 21 Clark Street, here in Southbridge. My name was on the list for the meeting two weeks ago, because there was missing paperwork, and I just, Maureen said my name was on the agenda for this meeting, and I didn't see it, so I just wanted to double-check and make sure, because she said it was on the list.
It's the next item.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Any other citizens wishing to come forward to speak?
John Palowski, Genesee Street, Southbridge.
John Palowski, Genesee Street, Southbridge. This is probably going to be the shortest address I've ever made before the council, but considering that the hearing wasn't on the air, and not all of our councilors are here, and Mr. McKinnon's revelation that the front doors are locked, this meeting is unfortunately a violation of the open meeting law, so maybe best just to put at least some of the more important votes off until another night because they're very likely, if things go the way they have on other such complaints in this building, like, for example, the Board of Health meeting of December 27th, 2007, the Attorney General will be instructing you to revote, so let's just, you know, there's a lot going on, it's the holidays, let's just put that off until after, let the voters think about this tax increase, and you folks have more time to consult with the voters, and that way you'll have a legal vote. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything they wish to say?
Rosio Fernandez, 56 Everett Street. Just want to say a couple of things. I was very happy to hear Spanish in this forum once again. I believe the last time Spanish was spoken in here, investigations were attempted to be launched to understand what was said, so it was, it was really nice to hear Spanish in here, considering the population is a third of this town. Regarding the agenda, I believe some of the mix-up for the ICE question was that we have October 3rd agendas out on the floor. I believe the Chair was going to make an effort to at least keep agendas current and available. That doesn't seem to be happening.
I guess I'll have to call on the, every Monday afternoon to make sure one's out there. Is that, will that be, will that be okay?
Oh, that would be perfect. Thank you. And the parking ban, I know that we're starting the parking ban, I would at least comment to the, the management, at least have a little consideration for the situations of the elderly. I know it's a revenue stream, you've made it very clear that situations like parking bans are revenue stream, so just consider, you know, that hundred dollars, two hundred dollars, it means a lot to some of the elderly in this town. Just have a little bit of humanity there, and I guess that's it. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else wish to come forward? Okay. Moving along. Agenda item number nine, vote to ratify the snow and ice control operations agreement between the town of Southbridge and bid awardee Deanna Hazard for snow plowing and/or snow removal.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Could I have a roll call, please?
Councilman Landevan?
Yes.
Councilman Livinggood?
Yes.
Councilman McCucci?
Yes.
Councilman McDonald?
Yes.
Councilman Nicola?
Yes.
Councilman Spinelli?
Yes.
Councilman Vandal?
Yes.
Seven yess?
Thank you. Agenda item number 10 will be the overview by the Board of Assessors on tax classification and the tax rate. Mr. Conoyer?
Good evening. It'll just take me a moment to set up the laptop.
Good evening, Chairman Nicola, members of the town council, citizens of Southbridge. I'm Will Conoyer, Chairman of the Board of Assessors and the Principal Assessor. Tonight we'll be discussing the tax rate and the tax classification factor for fiscal year 2012. As you all know, we had a public hearing prior to this meeting where all the citizens were given an opportunity to weigh in on the classification. You've also already received detailed information in your memo in your packet, but this presentation will summarize it for you and also the residents. Bear with me, there's a lot more here than is required by law for the presentation. Myself and the other members of the board really feel strongly that we want the citizens of Southbridge to know just about everything we do, where the numbers come from, all the way through, and what we're doing. Also, the numbers that we use are, to the best of our knowledge, correct. They're according to Mass. General Law. A lot of the statistics we use, we get from the Department of Revenue website. Some statistics I get from calling other assessors to find out what the, what things are in their community, and we try to piece it together in a comprehensive presentation for the people, so we have a topic of discussion. At the public hearing, it was mentioned, and I'd like to reiterate it again, what we're voting on here is not the tax rate, not the tax levy, not the budget. What we're voting on is, Mass. General Law allows us to split the tax rate or to increase the amount for business and commercial and reduce the residential class. That's really what the bottom line is here, and that's, that's, that's part of our presentation, but that's what, what we're really here for. Kara Donovan here has some additional copies of our PowerPoint presentation, and she'll pass out to the councilors and anybody in the audience who'd like one. It's basically, the slide's up there. Couple of little things, in the, in your packet, the detailed memo I gave you, I made a couple of small typos, and I correct them here, I'll point them out to you. They're relatively minor, but when I put my name to something, I'd say correct to the best of my knowledge, so that's why I mention it. Also, the town accountant spotted them, and she won't let me get away with it, but it's a different matter. Okay, so, the purpose of the public hearing, Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 56, it allows a shift in the tax burden between classes. This does not change the total class, total tax levy for the town, it simply determines the share to be borne by each class. What the classification does, hearing does not do, classification does not determine the tax rate for the town. Basically, it's the math which we'll get into which determines it. Classification does not determine how much money can be raised. It's Proposition 2.5 in Mass. General Law. Classification does not determine how much money will be raised. We'll get into that also, but basically, it's the amount of appropriations that a town makes versus all of their other revenue sources, and what's left is the tax levy. Our topics of discussion tonight will be new growth, the property values and the total town, total taxable town value, the tax levy and the tax rate, the town's levy limit, excess levy capacity and what that is, the classification factors. We give examples of a tax shift, and tax-wise, how do we compare to the rest of the state, the area towns, and so forth? New growth, what is it? Well, it's new buildings, additions, renovations, subdivisions, condo conversions, new businesses, factories, and business equipment. How does it affect property taxes? It brings in additional tax dollars without affecting current taxpayers. How does it affect the tax levy? It increases the amount of property tax that can be raised under the constraints of Proposition As you can see, there was $12,115,000 in total new growth, which will bring, excuse me, which will bring in an additional $207,000 in property tax without affecting existing taxpayers. Historically, last year's new growth was $152,999. Okay? It's important to note that this year, only 22.1 percent is coming from the residential class, while 77.9 percent of this year's new growth is coming from the commercial, industrial, and personal property classes, the so-called CIP classes. The majority of the new growth this year is personal property or business equipment, and that looks to be the trend for the foreseeable future. This is a continuation from last year as well. As you can see here, the total town value is $907,741,051, and that's a decrease of $2,702,000 or .3 percent from last year. This is the first of my typos. In your packet, I said it went down .03 percent, it was actually .3 percent. The difference is minor, but I just want to be as accurate as possible. So, last year, the residential class bore 78.1 percent of the taxes, and that, this year, it's reduced again. This is the continuation of a trend that began in fiscal year 2007, and the primary reason is that the entire residential class decreased less than 1 percent in value, while the CIP classes increased 1.2 percent in value. This shifts the tax burden to those properties, which in this case are the commercial, industrial, and personal property classes. This slide, this is a graphic look at the breakdown of properties and of the commercial, industrial, and personal property classes, the CIP classes. One thing I'd like to mention, you see the 77.8 percent of residential class, I just want to, you know, for interest of accuracy, I heard it mentioned earlier that that was all single-family properties. It's not. That's the entire residential class, of which probably, I'm estimating here, but about two-thirds of which is single-family properties. The remainder of all, are all two-family, three-family, major apartments, our rosemeat is included in the residential class, all the land, and again, this is according to state law, the way this is done, it's the same statewide, according to law. Notable changes in valuation that have occurred this year are some of the following. The tornado of June 1st resulted in over $2 million in reduced property value due to damage. This occurred primarily in the residential class. There were several fires that, that resulted in a loss of structure. Commercial building was demolished, several actually. The biggest, the biggest change, however, was a large amount of personal property new growth increased the personal property share of the total town value from 4.7 percent to 5.2 percent this year. That's, that's huge. Another notable change is, the condominium class decreased more than the other classes. The real estate market in condos was particularly hard, so they decreased quite a bit. This is a pretty good slide here, I put together today, actually, yeah, I elaborated it today. This is the trend of the last five years, and it shows, last six years, the CIP classes to make up a larger percent of the tax base. If you look, in 2007, the residential class made up 83 percent, 83.4 percent, and the CIP only 16.6. As you can see, the residential class has been decreasing, and the CIP, commercial, industrial, personal property, has been increasing. What does that mean, really? It means the residential classes are paying less of a share of the total town tax burden by almost 5 percent in the last six years. Just to note, because these charts could go on forever, but the last time that the commercial, industrial, personal property class made up this much was, I believe, 2001, and the items were almost identical to now. So, this is one bit of good news and everything. Interim year adjustments. All of our values by state law have to represent full and fair cash value, and in this case, as of January 1, 2011. Revaluation and recertification. What that means is, every three years, we have a recertification where the state comes in, and they look at all of our adjustments in depth. I mean, it's a really comprehensive process to make sure that all of our properties make, represent full and fair cash value, but in the two interim years between those three, we have to go through the same process. The state simply doesn't come in and audit every item of it. We still have to submit it to them based on the same criteria, but they're not here checking every single item. What that does is, it means taxes are based on your proportional share of total town value. So, for example, if there were $100,000 that made up a town, each, each $100,000 house would pay 10 percent of the tax burden. You elaborate that out further to Southbridge, that's why it's so important that every property be fully, fully, fairly assessed at full and fair cash value, so that, and also, these individual proportions can change from year to year based on real estate markets and the sales. Okay? The valuation changes this year. As you can see, single families were, went down about a half of 1 percent. Condominiums went down 11.7 percent. Two-and-three families went down 4 tenths of 1 percent. Multifamily, 3 tenths of 1 percent. Land went down about a percent and a half. In the aggregate, the entire residential class decreased in value, individually, decreased in value by .7 percent, less than 1 percent. The commercial and the industrial classes, they did not go up or down at all as far as individual valuations across the class. Okay. Your tax levy and tax rate. The tax levy is determined by all appropriations and expenditures as voted, okay, and also state and county charges. It's paid for by state aid and receipt, reimbursements, the local receipts, which are excise taxes, fees, et cetera, enterprise funds, which are the water sewer rates and so forth, free cash, stabilization, other transfers. The remainder is the tax levy, which is what we have tonight. So, this slide here summarizes the recap sheet that we'll be submitting to Boston this week. So, the total amount to be raised from the recap is $53,471,000. From that, you subtract the state, state aid receipts of 21, 21 million, you subtract the local receipts, which will come to about $5,600,000, you subtract the enterprise funds revenue, which is $6,971,000, and you subtract the free cash votes, transfers, stabilization money, and overlay transfers of $3,277,000. That yields a tax levy of $16,185,023. So, how do we get to the tax rate? We've already said the 2012 tax levy is $16,185,023. The 2010 taxable value for the town is $907,741,000. So, if you simply do the math, you divide the $16,185,000 levy by the total town value, and that yields a tax rate of $17.83 per thousand dollars of valuation. That's the formula, that's the mathematical formula, it doesn't change from here to Boston. Tax levy and the tax rate. As you can see in this slide, the 2010, excuse me, 2012 levy is going to be $16,185,000. Last year's levy was 2, was $15,605,000. That's an overall increase over last year of $580,000 or 3.7 percent. But if you subtract the new growth, which we've already talked about, of 207,000, that means the net increase to existing taxpayers is $372,352 or 2.39 percent. Levy limit and excess levy capacity. What is Proposition 2.5? Well, it was, it creates a levy ceiling, which means your tax rate cannot be more than 2.5 percent of your total town value, okay, which doesn't apply to most cities and towns, and it doesn't apply here, I'm just using it for definition, and it defines what your levy limit is. What is the levy limit and the maximum allowable tax levy? Basically, it's last year's levy limit plus a 2.5 percent increase, plus your new growth, and that equals your levy limit. Normally, you would add any debt exclusions or overrides to that, we'll get to that in a minute, and that equals the maximum allowable tax levy, which is the maximum amount of money a town is able to raise under the law. What is excess levy capacity? It's the maximum allowable levy minus the actual tax levy. So, on the next page, for the town of Southbridge, these are our numbers. Okay, so last year, our levy limit was $15,849,000. Add to that a 2.5 percent increase allowed under Proposition 2.5. Add to that our 2012 new growth, and that brings our fiscal year 2012 levy limit to As I said, normally, you would add any debt exclusions or overrides. The town of Southbridge is very unique in that we get reimbursed more for the debt exclusion of the renovation of the elementary schools than we pay, so we have to reduce the amount by the $61,000, which is the overage. So, that means the max, 2012 maximum allowable tax levy is $16,391,899. This excess levy capacity is the additional amount that the town is allowed to raise in property tax under Prop. 2.5, but fiscal year 2012 chose not to. Although the town's ability to raise its maximum allowable levy is not affected, this amount will be lost this year. This amount for fiscal year 2012... This amount for fiscal year 2012 is $206,876. You can see by that chart how much more, how much additional property tax could have been levied by the community in each of the last, what do I have there, six years, but was not. So this is the amount we're under Prop 2.5 each year in the tax levy. Excuse me for one moment. Okay, classification factor. General law, Chapter 40, Section 56 requires the council to adopt a factor between 1 and the minimum residential factor. This is what we were talking about, about splitting the tax rate. The maximum shift of 50% to the CIP classes and based on a proportion of value, residential to commercial, the minimum residential factor is .857156 out of a versus 1.0. Council may adopt a factor anywhere between 1.0 and that factor. A factor of 1.0 would mean each class would be taxed at the same rate, which we are currently. And we can go over some examples of various, of shift on various classes. Okay, this chart, in your packet that we passed out, has a tiny little chart showing this, but there's a full page at the very back of it, I think the second to the last page, which should be readable. I'm actually looking at a very, very small copy, so I have a hard time seeing it, but the 3/4 of the way to the bottom, you can see, highlighted in yellow, with a single tax rate, the average, the average single-family property will pay $2,948.92 this year. The average commercial will pay $8,519 and the average industrial will pay $9,269 in property tax this year. Right above that, you'll see an example of 10%, 20%, 30%, all the way up to a 50% shift. At a 50% shift, if we were to do that, the residential, average, average single-family property tax bill would be decreased at $25,27, which is a savings of what, about $420? But to do that, the average commercial would go to $12,781, which would be an increase of about $4,200 and the average industrial would go to $13,907, which is an increase of about $4,700. Or you could do anything in the middle and there are examples of the various shifts. The Board of Assessors does not, has not, and does not think it's a good idea to shift the tax rate. So it's the recommendation of the Board of Assessors that the council again approve a factor of 1.0, a single tax rate, and this would yield a tax rate of $17.83 per thousand dollars valuation. Just as an aside, I believe about 1/3 of the communities in Massachusetts actually have a split tax rate, 2/3 do not. It's usually the places that have a split tax rate, usually the ones around Metro West or around a very good highway system. 290 perhaps Worcester has a split tax rate, I believe Auburn does, 495, some of the communities do, some do not. And when you don't have a split tax rate, the reason the Board doesn't recommend it is a split tax rate, a single tax rate is an advantage to a business. A split tax rate is a severe disadvantage and other communities go after you trying to get your business and it's competitive enough out there right now in our opinion. But that's aside. Okay, the next slide here shows examples of actual tax bills with a single tax rate. Again, the highlighted part in the middle shows what the average tax bill will be in the various state classes and right below that, I have last year's tax which will show a change, the change from last year. So the first one that you see is, the first column is condominiums. Their average tax will be $13.76 this year, which will actually be a decrease of 8.19%. It'll be a decrease of $122. It's nothing the Board of Assessors did, that's the real estate market which determines their values. The second column is single families. The average tax will be $2,0948, which is an increase of $96 over last year with 3.39%. Two families, an increase of $72.52 or 2.8%. Three families, an increase of 3.63%. Over four-unit apartment buildings, the average tax bill is $4,954 and it'll be an increase of 3.28%. The average commercial property, the average bill is $8,519, it'll be an increase of about 2%. This is a little bit deceptive because part of the reason is one significant commercial property was decreased in value dramatically which just lowered the average there. And the average industrial, the average tax bill is $9,269 and they'll be going up 3.32%. So it's all in the same ballpark with the exception of condominiums who get relief this year. You know, just one note about that, there was a time a few years back, condominiums really caught fire and their taxes increased, you know, if we were talking about these kind of increases, 3, 4% for most classes, condominiums in a couple of years went up 15, 20%. So as I say, the proportions vary, it's all based on their, on their value in the real estate market. So anyway, so the classification factor, as I said before, it's the continued belief of the Board of Assessors that a shift in the tax burden could cause existing businesses to seek other areas to conduct operation and hinder the prospects of attracting additional new business. Once a town votes to split the tax rate, even by a very small amount, it's very difficult politically to go back in future years. In addition, due to the dynamic change in real estate values, there's already been a shift to the CIP classes over the last couple of years. Therefore, we believe to shift the tax burden further to the business class would be short-sighted and counterproductive. Again, we recommend a vote of factor of 1, a single tax rate. The next section that we get into is tax-wise, how do we compare? I'm going to talk a little bit how we compare statewide, then we're going to talk about how we compare to the towns around us. Okay, according to, how do we compare? According to the DOR from last year, these are all published on the DOR website, the average single-family property tax bill statewide was $4,537. Last year, the average single-family property tax bill was $28.52 in Southbridge. And that means the average single-family tax bill in Southbridge was 16.85 less or 37% less than the state average. For last year, for fiscal year 2011, Southbridge ranked 280th out of the 338 analyzed communities in the state in regards to the smallest or lowest average single-family tax bill. This put us in the lowest 17.2%.
Excuse me, could you repeat that again and say it right into the microphone so everyone can hear it, Mr. Canoia? Thank you.
Again, these numbers are from the DOR, but for 2011, Southbridge ranked 280th out of the 338 analyzed communities in the state in regards to the smallest average single-family tax bill. This put us in the lowest 17.2% in terms of average single-family tax burden. Last year, fiscal year 11, the average single-family tax bill in Southbridge was $28.52. This slide here, I put together for tonight as well, what this shows is two things. It's the state average, which is in the green on the upper end, versus Southbridge average single-family tax bill. And I'm using both numbers in this chart, going from 1993 all the way to 2011, okay? I don't expect, please don't expect me to know all of these numbers, but I know some of them. In the first year, 1993, the average tax bill, single-family tax bill statewide was 1993. In Southbridge, it was $1,437, okay? So that purple line on the far left represents just about $1,500 for the town and just under $2,000 for the state. As you follow the purple along, you see it kind of went up slightly in 95, 96 and then there was actually, there were some years when it didn't go up at all and there were some years when it went down a little bit. Right around 2001, it unfortunately started a steady march upward and that accelerated in 2006, up to now, at the type of rates we're talking about, although there was a couple of large increases around 2005, okay? Now, you look on the top, in the green, that's the average state tax bill. It started at about, right under $2,000 and if you'll notice, it's, the divergence from Southbridge has increased quite, quite a bit, to the point where on the far right, 2011, the average bill in the state of Mass is $4,537, where in Southbridge, it's $28.52. And these numbers are all for fiscal year 11. I mean, fiscal year 12, most towns don't have their tax rate set, but it just, it just shows you, we've gone up certainly and I wish we hadn't because I pay it just like anyone else, but as you look objectively, the rest of the state has too at probably a higher percentage than us. Okay, so again, this isn't part of the classification here and I just think everybody has a right to know the information. Okay, this year, average 2012 single-family tax bill, this information is gleaned from, this is for the current year, I got this from calling other towns and their assessors where they have set a tax rate or it's imminent and these are the numbers. So as you can see, Southbridge on the top line, our tax rate is going to be $17.83 and our average single-family tax bill is $2,948. The line below that is Stirbridge, their tax rate is $17.63, 20 cents less than us, but if you look further to the right, their average tax bill is $4,552 based on their tax rate and there's something in Stirbridge called the CPA, Community Preservation Act, which is a surtax, a surcharge of an additional 3%. So in this case, that's about $80 on the average person, so that $4,552 in Stirbridge, add approximately $80 because it may not be a tax, but it's on your bill. So that comes to $46.32 approximately, okay? Very similar tax rate, but their values are higher, so it means a higher tax. Town of Charlton, their tax rate is going to be $12 per thousand, but their average single-family property tax is $3,044. Town of Holland, their tax rate is $15.18, their average single-family property tax bill is $29.23. The town of Dudley, and I commend the assessor in Dudley, but their tax rate is $10.90 and their average property tax bill is $22.82. Okay, so those are the communities directly around us. Okay, now, tax rate, this is another slide I put in today and I only do it for illustration because it's real important. People ask me about our tax rate, is our tax rate going up, is our tax rate going down? The tax rate is important, but what is much, much more important is the tax rate times the values, that tells how much each person pays. So I'm just putting this out for illustration, but our, Southbridge, our tax rate is $17.83, it yields a tax of, average single-family tax of $2,948, okay? Town of Alfred, their tax rate is only $4.40, great, but their average tax bill is $2,946, very similar to ours. The town of Sherborne, their tax rate is $1,822, that's higher than us, but look at their average single-family tax, it's $13,000. Now, I know this community, these communities are not representative of us, I'm simply trying to illustrate the tax rate, how taken by itself or out of context, it doesn't mean anything. Town of Lincoln, their tax rate is lower than us, $13.81, but their average tax bill is $13,000. Town of East Long Meadow, $1,885 tax rate, $4,781 in property tax. There's a reason I picked these communities. Right now, there's only 31 communities in the state that have a tax rate and are listed on the, with the DOR. I was very, very limited in what I could pull, I was just trying to show a high, a low tax rate, high tax rate, how it really doesn't mean anything by itself. After all of that, I'm just going to shift gears slightly and say tax exemptions and help. We have a number of seniors and other classes of people who have, are eligible under state law for tax exemptions, most of them are already aware of them and they come in and apply every year, but we've get a number of new people who come in to see if they're eligible and I just put this out there because if you think or even have a question, are you eligible for any help? Please come in and call me, call my staff, we have brochures which will help explain it. There's the Clause 17D, if you're an elderly person or a widow or widower, and certain other qualifications, you can get $175 off. If you're an elderly person and meet certain financial qualifications, you can get $500 off. There are various veterans exemptions for people who are different degrees of disability according to the VA and service-related, blind exemption, there's hardship exemptions if you don't fit into other classes of state law, this is one where we can take a look at it, it's very difficult, but we can look at it. Clause 41A, tax deferral, that's a pretty good one that not many people in Southbridge take advantage of, but basically what that says is you can apply every year to defer all of your real estate taxes to a point later on in the future. Now granted, there's an interest rate and so forth, but you know, it can help somebody, you know, you can, for example, if you owe $2,900 in real estate tax, you can defer any or all of it. If you have $2,900 in real estate tax and you get a $500 exemption which brings it to $2,400, you can then defer the $2,400 until a later point in time, either when you pass away or sell the property or you elect to pay it back. And the last thing is the senior tax rebate program. It's an opportunity for seniors and we have approximately 40 of them who take advantage now, where you volunteer in various departments and you get $500 off of your real estate I apologize for the length, but I, that's what it took.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions at this time?
Point of information or have a question, Madam Chair? Thank you.
Counselor?
Through you to Mr. Canoia. You started out your presentation by saying we're not voting on a tax rate tonight. Did I understand you correctly when you said that?
That's pretty much correct, yes. Want me to elaborate?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions, but in the meantime, then I have to, if I may, Madam Chair, get some explanation or clarification on the agenda because we have, as I see it, five agenda items dealing with tax rate tonight. Agenda item 11 and 12 and 13 seem to be very related. And it seems to me, and I want to make sure I understand here, that agenda item 13 is going to be to actually set the tax rate.
Yeah, actually, thank you. I'm going to grab my agenda and I want to answer that. That's a great question. Agenda item 11 to 13 are to vote classification factors. A factor of, agenda item 11 is a factor of 1 which means a single tax rate. Item 12, a no vote means a single tax rate. 13, a single, is another vote for a single tax rate. So you're voting the classification factor in those three agenda items. I'm glad you mentioned it because it completely slipped my mind. There is a form that Department of Revenue, it's part of the recapitalization package that we submit, that I pass around all of the, to all the counselors and basically what that shows is the information has been given to you and you've been presented with the various options and the Board will, whatever option you vote, we will present. But one last question, one last comment on that. The fact, the tax rate of $17.83 is what the math comes out to. Most other assessors will say, until it's certified by the Department of Revenue, and I'll say it now, that's subject to change. Department of Revenue could, or maybe some other votes, can change that slightly, okay? We're voting basically on the classification factors, okay? The tax rate can change. I have no, wouldn't think it would at all and for me, it never has, but it could. And if you were to vote to split the tax rate, in that myriad of papers I gave you, the tax rate, the underlying tax rate would stay the same, but the split would be different. There's a, there's a chart in the packet I gave you, in your packets, and there's information here, it would change. For example, I don't have the slide in front of me, but if you voted to shift the tax rate, let's say the residential went from $17.83 to $17, well, the commercial tax rate would go up, but the bottom-line tax rate, the amount it would raise, would be the same, okay? Can I answer it?
It does, but a follow-up to that, Madam Chair. This has to be done every year as far as adopting a single-rate tax classification, correct?
Correct.
Because we did this last year, but we have to do it again this year.
Correct.
Okay, and, yeah, that's what I thought. But it seems to me that we also have another option here that's not very clear and that's what I'm trying to clarify is because one of these votes, and I'm assuming it's agenda item 13, is actually to establish the tax rate at $17.83. But we don't have to establish the tax rate at $17.83, we could in effect leave it at And we'd have to adjust the budget to order to balance the budget.
Want to answer the question? Excuse me. Could you answer the question, please?
I could. You wouldn't be voting, you're not voting on a tax rate, you wouldn't be voting on a $17.14. What you could do is if you voted to appropriate more free cash or more reserves to lower the levy, you could do that, or you could reduce budgets or whatever to bring down the levy to whatever, I mean, $17.14... 1714 is an arbitrary number. So you'd be voting to either increase the amount of money put in to lower the levy, or the opposite, voting to reduce budgets or reduce expenditures that you'd already voted upon. Everything here has already been voted upon. Okay? I'm simply giving you what the math comes out to, and it comes out to 1783.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, because we did not vote on this. We voted on a budget, but that budget could change depending on this tax rate. But we can have, we should have, agenda item 13, when we get to it, should have a number in there.
Would you like to answer that?
No, I just, and this is one of the things that the state, the way the state works is that this is really just tax classification. So the amount of money that's been raised has already been determined. What they ask you to do, and I don't quite always understand why the state does what it does, but in this respect, item number 11 is vote to establish a tax classification factor 1.0. So you were told what the impact of that would be, the 17.83 for 1.0. They then ask for basically a no vote. If you want to have the single tax rate, number 12 says vote to adopt a varied classifications of property for tax purposes, including open space. So it's almost like the state's saying, okay, if you say you want one, are you really sure you want one and you don't want to split it? So they ask you to vote in the affirmative on the first, and the negative on the second, if you want that single, single rate. And then the third is, once again, just an affirmation of, do you want the one? So, again, it's kind of hard to understand. You would think that there'd be one vote, one rate. Here, they specifically ask for three votes, because I think DOR or the Commonwealth in its wisdom has determined that it wants to make sure. But the issue for tonight, the only issue for tonight in rigacities, and why you don't see any numbers, is because it's the classification factor that's being voted.
I understand, I disagree with that assessment. We have the right, we have home rule to set our tax rate. We can adopt the classification independent of the tax rate. That's why it's down here as three different measures. Otherwise, it wouldn't be that way. Communities, that, that, what you're saying is in effect that we have to do this assessment, and we automatically have to raise taxes. And I disagree that that, that is how it's done. That, that totally usurps the concept of home rule. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. But that has nothing to do with our vote. Thank you. Counselor Regis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think maybe there's a little bit of a misunderstanding. It's not this body's, it's not appropriate for us. We do not set the tax rate. We do not set the tax rate. That is not our responsibility. We, we do not. You don't agree with me, but we don't. The Board of Assessors, it's their responsibility to actually set the tax rate, which is then certified by the DOR. All this body is responsible for doing is saying, do you want a classification of one, which Mr. Canoyer has told us will be $17.83 per thousand? Or do you want to shift your tax burden onto your commercial and industrial taxpayers? If that's the case, yes, your tax rate will go down, and your commercial industrial users' tax rate will go up. That is this body's responsibility only.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Counselor?
Thank you. If that were the case, then number one, it wouldn't be a recommendation to us. They would do it, and it would be so. The power in our charter to appropriate funds comes to this body, and we vote on it. We wouldn't have to vote on it if it was going to be that way.
That's incorrect.
And the other...
And in saying so, excuse me, in saying so is just inciting more confusion in the people out there. We're trying to clarify this, Counselor, not make it something that it is not. We are simply sitting here to vote on the, not the rate, on the classification, period. That's all this is.
Do I still have the floor?
No, it's not. And there, and that's, there's a classic example of you not understanding what we're trying to do.
Point of order, do I still have the floor?
Go ahead. No, you don't.
I don't have the floor?
Yes, you do. Go ahead, Counselor.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I disagree with this. If we, we already have a single rate, so if we don't vote on this tonight, if we, if we do, to do a no vote where it says yes, because I believe in a single tax classification, I have no desire to split it. Does that mean it stays the same at 1714?
No, it doesn't. If, if I could for a moment, I'd like to, I have a couple of slides up here. This illustrates it perfectly. This is what the recap sheet is that goes into the state, and this is where the tax rate is determined. This, this sheet right here, the total amount to be raised, that's the sum of all of the appropriation votes during the course of the year. That's the budgets and everything else. That's the number that's on the recap, that's everything you voted for, 53 million. From that is the state aid, which is cherry sheet, local receipts, enterprise funds, which is water and sewer, all their revenue, free cash transfers, stabilization overlay. And a couple of those votes are here tonight to low, to reduce the tax rate to the point of what we're talking about tonight. All of those things subtracted from what you've already voted equal a levy of $16,185,000. Okay? The next slide, that's the same amount, the levy of $16,185. The total town taxable value is $907 million. Basically, the tax rate is the $16 million that, you know, that's left to be paid for, divided by the 907 million. That's 1783. That's math. That's exactly how, where it comes from. I, the only, the only way to lower the tax levy or the tax rate is to vote more in reserves to do that, if we, if you, if you were to desire that, or, the budgets have already been voted six months ago. It's way, it's too late for that. I, but...
Therein lies the rub, Madam Chair, is, we voted a budget, and we said this, I said this back in May when we were talking about that budget. If we voted that budget, we're going to have to raise taxes. So what you're saying is, we're now a slave to this budget? I believe the budget could still go back and be adjusted, and we could reduce that
Is there anybody else that has any questions for Mr. Canoyer? Counselor Markucci.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Canoyer, your presentation is incredible, and I appreciate all the work and all... Can you hear me now? I'm sorry.
You can say that again, I liked it.
I will, certainly. Can you hear me? Mr. Canoyer, I appreciate, your presentation was incredible, and I appreciate the work that you and your department put into this presentation this evening. I think the bottom line for people here this evening is they're going to, what we're voting on, are we voting on any increase in taxes for the people in Southbridge?
You're not voting on that, but this budget, the budget and all of the way the numbers work out is, there is an increase. Overall, I forget which slide it is, but overall, the increase to, to the town residents, I don't know where it is.
2.39.
2.39 percent. I have to do projections on this stuff all the time. At budget time, the projection that Mr. Clark presented was 3-point-something, 3, I can't remember the amount, but 3-point-something percent. I think it was 3.9 or...
3.6, 3.9.
Okay, so, yes. But it is an increase in the levy over last year, yes.
So what was presented by you, Mr. Clark, was 3.9, so it's actually a reduction to the 2.39.
2.39, that's correct. So we were able to do a little better than we anticipated.
Than what you anticipated.
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Counselor McDonald.
Madam Chair, that's the difference with the levy, the 2.9. Because when I do just the basic math in my head, and I could be wrong, I don't think I'm that far off, seven, the difference between $17.14 and $17.83 is 4%. I mean, the person who's paying the bill, and if their property's been devalued, it may seem like they're paying the same or even some little, something, something different, not much of a difference. If a person's property value went from 200,000 down to 180,000, and they're paying the same, they seen a tax increase, even if it's slightly more, on depreciated property value. We have people who are, have mortgages that are underwater. We have so many for sale signs around town, and when I look at this, we talk about the business equipment, the CIP being the, the shifting burden now. That, to me, doesn't speak of new jobs. That's businesses that are buying property or buying equipment to, for their current existing businesses, I understand. It's not new growth in jobs, it's not, not new growth in, in businesses coming in. And that's because, as Mr. Satilli alluded to in his citizens forum, is we have people who are leaving this town because of the tax rate. We're in a downward spiral. When we start looking at the decrease in property value and the increase in taxes that people are paying. And it's nice to compare us to Charlton and everything, but the median income in Southbridge, my last estimation that I, I looked at on the website was somewhere in the range of the mid $30,000. We're not, 4% or even 2-point-something percent in this economy is an awful lot to be asking of the taxpayers and the citizens of this town. They're real people, they're not statistics or on this slide. No offense to you, you did a great job putting a slideshow together and giving us some good information. But those are the questions that are in my head. I'm thinking in terms of, of people that I know who have expressed that concern to me, and I represent them. And I'm going to be their voice as long as I have one. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. That's enough. That's enough. We're trying to conduct a meeting here. Counselor Edmondson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think, as much as we don't like the taxes going up, we're not voting on taxes going up. We're voting on how we're going to divide the taxes. Are we going to run businesses out of town by charging them more taxes to lower our taxes? Or are we going to, everybody pays a tax? So, I mean, people run out of town for lots of reasons. One, there's no jobs. And two, a start of a good economy starts with new equipment that people couldn't afford because it was a bad economy. Some of the benefits of new equipment can be increased business, which eventually will come into new jobs. I'm not going to turn down any company buying new equipment that brings in more tax revenue to this town. And I'm not going to penalize any business because I want to lower tax rate myself. So we're not voting on a tax rate. We're voting on who's going to get paid the taxes, whether we're going to share it or we're going to stick it to one person over another. We can all make that decision on our own, but I myself, I don't believe in splitting the tax rate. Every town it has tries to go back. Even Stirbridge learned its lesson and did go back to a single tax rate. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Regis?
I'll defer to Counselor.
Women first, go ahead.
Thank you, Counselor Vandal. You know, it's, we have a business to run, and we produce a budget, and we need to generate revenue to support that budget. The tax levy is the largest portion of our revenues that supports that budget. So no is wonderful. It sounds great. It's wonderful, it'll be, you know, the quote in the paper tomorrow, and it's wonderful for people watching to hear, no. What's the answer? What's your remedy? I want to hear it. I want to hear it. What is it?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We need to make some serious decisions and some austerity measures. It's my understanding that within a couple of weeks, we're going to be looking at possibly buying a new street sweeper that I don't recall ever being in the budget that we discussed. Where did that money come from? We're talking about looking at things where we can streamline and save some money. We talked about this, if we knew that getting and adopting the budget we had, we had, there was some active recommendations on how we could reduce the budget, or at least to start up some dialogue in the last session when this issue came up. We could have done it then. I've expressed it then, I've expressed it right along. And that's something for the administration to go back and look and to see, where are ways that we can trim and save. There is, we were told there's no fat in the budget. I disagree after what I've seen. It starts with, with some exorbitant salaries and negotiations that we gave to department heads when they came in. That's nothing new. That's something that we've talked about, and there are, there's the, the talk of, when we look at what we have in stock in terms of police cruises, we've been making some very good strides in that effort. When we had the money and the resources to do so, things have changed. We could then go back and talk about cutting the two police cruises to save $70,000. We could have cut back on some of our legal expenses. Legal expenses that we then needed to, to go after, to pursue, the unlawful and, and really, something we didn't have the authority to do, removal of a board of health member. And I distinctly recall that I made that motion during the budget.
Is this, is this the answer to the question?
It is. I was asked a question, that's answered the question. Those were proposed back then, and I say it could have still been, there's some things that we could still do now. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Are you finished, Counselor? Thank you. Counselor Vandal?
I'll be the first to admit it, I'm so confused, it's awful. How do I vote to keep status quo? I don't want to raise taxes, it's not the time. All right? So how do I vote? Yes or no? I mean, this is so confusing.
All you have to do, Counselor, is read what it says after the vote question. It tells you exactly what to do. Can you read that on the, on the agenda?
Can you tell me how to vote?
Sure. Says it right here, I'll read it, I'll read it right off of that. I'm going to have the next person who speaks out removed, and I'll show you all about decorum.
Let me, let me take that.
Agenda item number 11, vote to establish a tax classification factor. See after it in parentheses, it says the BOA recommends a yes vote for a single tax rate. The next question also has in parentheses the recommendation, as does item number 13. See how each one of them has in parentheses the recommendation?
Yes.
That's, that's the answer.
That's their recommendation.
That's the answer to keep the status quo.
That's...
That's the answer to keep it the way it's been going.
Not to raise taxes.
You can't, this isn't going to have anything to do with raising taxes, Counselor. It has nothing to do with raising taxes.
We don't have, we don't have a say in raising taxes.
You had, you had, that's, that's, that ship sailed. Okay? That's done. This is just to keep whether or not you want the residents to pay one tax rate, and the commercial and industrial to pay another tax rate, or if you want the same tax rate across the board as it stands right now. If you want it to stay as it is right now, you just follow the recommendations in the parentheses.
Thank you.
Does that answer it?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Counsel, did you have something, Mr. Clark, that you wanted to add?
Just to, you actually did a pretty good job there. So the only thing I wanted to say is really, when the budget is set, the budget is set by a majority of the council. And when the budget is presented in May, it has a balance between it to keep the taxes at, at a low level, as low as we can. I think when we did the tax, when we did the, the budget this year, we had a lot of pressure on insurance, retirement, and other elements. We gave a 1% increase in terms of cost of living adjustment. We kept that very modest. In the time that I've been here, I've tried to have modest budgets in order to have modest tax increases. And I think this is, this is my fourth tax rate hearing. I believe this is the lowest tax rate in terms of the lowest percentage increase, the net increase, that we've had in the four years that I've been here. So I think that this is reasonable. Every single tax increase in the residential side, which as we heard was about 78%, is below $100. It costs money to operate government. The decisions in terms of the service levels that people want versus the taxes they want to pay is made in May. And unfortunately, in a, not unfortunately, fortunately, in a democratic process, the majority rule counts. And the majority of this council wanted the service levels to be retained, and in order to retain the service levels and to have the budget that was voted by majority vote in May, this is the impact. Really, tonight, the only thing is the classification, whether we're going to shift it or not. And I think a lot of this discussion really is, in, in terms of history, is, is, is not appropriate. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Counselor Vandal.
How, how much is this going to raise, the single, the single tax rate? The single house?
For a single family, one, one, nine, $96.62.
$96.62?
And 62 cents.
Yep. And, and they always say the average, but they're all over average because you, you...
That's, that's the answer, Counselor.
Thank you.
That's the answer. Counselor Regis?
Just one more question, if I could, Madam Chair, through you to Mr. Canoyer. Um, back in 2008, I'm just looking, that was the high, high watermark, not the highest watermark, but we had excess levy capacity of $700-plus thousand. And it's my understanding back at that time that DOR was not happy. They were looking at us and saying to us, why aren't you, why aren't you taxing? Is that correct?
Yeah, uh, my recollection is it is correct, yes. Because basically, at that time, we had a very high excess levy capacity. We were telling them we need more money, but we weren't raising it on our own, what proposition two and a half allowed us to do. So, yeah, that's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's pretty much it.
Madam Chair. Just in, in response to that statement, we're not elected by the DOR, we're elected by the citizens of Southbridge.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
And in response to your statement, I'm going to say something. Your, this is, what, your second year on town council?
It's not my second year in government, Madam Chair.
I'm not, I just asked a yes or no question. I'm going, I'm going to respond now, because we've heard you, and I've heard other people, and I'm going to speak. Because I've been here for a while. And I pay my taxes, and I've owned my home in this community for a long time, so I feel I have a right to speak as well. And what I'm going to say is this, when I first got on town council, I was faced with looking at a tax increase that was criminal. And the reason it was criminal is because prior councilors decided that to be popular and to continue to get the applause out in the audience, they were going to say no to tax increases. It is never, ever recommended anywhere, Southbridge included, that you do not increase the taxes every year. Everything else goes up, why wouldn't the tax go up to pay for those things? And that makes sense. If you, if you raise taxes in very small increments, as opposed to 11%, because you've been neglectful in raising taxes in increments, it is not a bad thing. It is a proper thing. And yeah, yeah, times are rough. Times are rough for me, just as much as anybody else out there. I'm a single parent, I'm the only provider in my house, and I've got a big mortgage, okay? So, I know all about that. I'm not sitting on Easy Street. And yet, I know realistically, that if you want the services that this town provides, you have to pay taxes for that. There are, there are things that, that you have to do, and that's one of them, you pay taxes. If you can't afford your taxes, the solution isn't pretty, but it's there. You sell your property, and you move on. So, I'm not suggesting that, and I'm not being, trying to be cold, but to sit here and pretend that there's a solution like not doing anything is criminal. It's not realistic. And that's impossible to even, to even fathom that you would think that. Anybody that goes to subcommittee meetings, watches these meetings, looks at what we have to do every single other week in appropriation of money here, there, and everywhere else, where do you think that comes from? It has to come from somewhere. And prior to my time on council in 2005, that wasn't happening. Instead, we were putting our hand out and expecting the state to continue to give us money. No wonder the DOR, of course the DOR is saying, wait a minute, you know, you've got to help yourself. You're sitting there looking like a big hero town council in Southbridge, and yet, we're the ones who are paying your, paying your freight. No, that's not the way it goes. And I, I frankly wouldn't, I, I wouldn't even imagine a time where you could possibly have, have a budget where, or, or look at a tax rate and say that you're not going to increase taxes. I'm not saying 10, 5, 10, 15%, but it's unreasonable. And $96, less than $100 per household? Yeah, times are tough. But I'm sure that people will be able to come up with that in order to keep the kinds of, of services that they have in this community. That's why we have the services we have in this community. It's amazing. It's amazing. And I happen to know that the last two or three town managers that came into this community, including Jack, Jack Healy, who was here for only a short period of time, who had no dog in the race, comes in, looks at the way things are done, and said, right up here on this, on this dais, what are you people doing? You have to raise taxes. That's the way it works. That's the way a business works. And it's unfortunate, and you know what? You want to be a town counselor? This is the toughest part of the job, is saying that to people. And, and that's what you have to do. So, and that's what I'm going to do. And I'm sorry, if people want to approach me in the supermarket, on the telephone, whatever, I'm going to tell you the same thing then too. That's the way it is. You get what you pay for. And to sit back and think you don't get that, you, you, you get away with that? Show me a community where that, that exists, and I'll show you nirvana. And if there are no other councilors that want to go on with this, we're going to move on and vote. Do you have something, Counselor? Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I couldn't agree with you more. Basically, it's the truth. This is the hot spot of being a counselor. Well, I, I agree with Counselor Markucci every time you put a great presentation together. It is hard to sit up here and look at the stats. Basically, yes, us as residents, we are pretty much paying the tax bill for the town of Southbridge. That's no secret, okay? Um, we don't have enough business. We have to generate business, okay? There's people that fought the, the industrial park road going up by my neighborhood, okay? It's not going to be snap your fingers and there's going to be industrial park there, okay? We're trying to get new business in. If we look across the world, there's businesses foreclosing across the world, not just in the town of Southbridge, as Mr. Sottili likes to point out, what's going on, what are you doing? Okay? This is happening across the world, okay? In a week and a half from now, I'm going to have a meeting on, um, police officers and firefighters that left, and we're going to replace them. So, basically, what you're telling me right now is, let's not replace them. But, in the same breath, if you have a fire at your house and they don't show up right away, you're going to come back and say, where were the firefighters? Where were the police officers? Why isn't my street picked up with brush and debris? That all costs money. All of us paying that money. Now, with that being said, I can agree with Counselor McDonald in some areas. And during budget time, I will look. I've expressed my opinion with Mr. Clark on different ways. When I ran for office, I said we need to start looking at different creative ways on how to do our business, not because we've been doing it for the last 30 years this way, and that's the way we do it. No. Challenge your department heads and see what they can do to change things around and be more cost-effective. I agree with that. But not to raise our taxes, you're telling me to lay off police, fire, DPW workers. That's what you're telling me? That's not the answer, because you like our services. So, tonight, I am going to vote the way it's written, and if you don't like that, again, we will have an election. Come, see what it's all about. Not, these are not easy decisions up here, okay? Nobody likes to make these tough decisions. But I will work for you and try to reduce some things that we can to help offset some costs. But to say I'm never going to raise the budget in the taxes, you're not going to get that out of me. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Anybody else wish to?
I'd like to follow up to that.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The most critical component of our government that suffered the most in recent years is the school system, clearly. And I don't think anybody would disagree with that. Yet, in this past budget cycle, they were the only, as far as my recollection is, the only department that had to lay off people. There was absolutely no losses anywhere else, because they had to deal with the budget amount that we voted for them. And I was not in favor of laying off police officers or firefighters, uh, and I proposed measures back then during budget season, I'm not going to rehash those. So, I don't think anybody's talking about targeting specific areas. There are other ways in other areas that could have been targeted. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Sottili.
Uh, the chairwoman said it, and, and Counselor Regis, uh, said it again. We've got to stop the masking spin as logic. Yes, we are here to shift the burden. Shift the burden so it shows some reduction in our tax. Shift it even for symbolic reasons. Make your cuts in the budget too, later on. But I believe, if you miss the point, if you, if you continue with the logic that taxes have to go up. If I accept that, then shift the burden. Make it easier on us. Make it easier, the hundred bucks, for people, and don't force them to move out of town. Makes no sense at all. So, so be more compassionate about the people who you represent. They're out there, they're listening to this. Pay attention.
John Plasky, Jensen Street. Brought this up at the last meeting. We have a contract in force. Our town accountant, not some politician, our town accountant stood at this dais in the spring of 2007 and assured the council that was voting that there would, if they voted that night in favor of that contract on Barefoot Road, that there would be $3,400,000 a year coming this town, starting the following year. That has not happened. 2008, 2009, 2010, 2011, we have been shorted somewhere between $6 and $8 million. And we hear this, this simplified breakdown, like we're being, we're talked to like children, that the only way you can raise revenue is through raising taxes or reducing services, when in fact, when there was a member of the Board of Health who attempted to, at least consider, finding...
Madam Chair, point of order?
One point...
We are not discussing a tax rate tonight. We are not discussing a budget tonight. We are discussing how we're going to divide up the taxes.
Okay, well, I'll cut it off. I'll say Mr. Uh, uh, Livinggood, the moment, I just, I know that one of you got elected back in June, saying that you were going to milk Casella for everything that they owe us. That hasn't happened, so get the money from the people you said you'd get the money from. Don't milk the taxpayers, please.
Moving on, um, I need agenda item number 11, vote to establish a tax classification factor of one for tax purposes. And as I said, the Board of, of Assessors recommends a yes vote for a single tax rate.
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please. Counselor Livinggood?
Yes.
Counselor Markucci?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
No.
Counselor Nicola?
Yes.
Counselor Regis?
Yes.
Counselor Spinelli?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
No.
Counselor Langivan?
Yes.
Six yes, two no? Thank you. Agenda item number 12...
Excuse me, Chair, Chairwoman Nicole, there's a form I'm going to pass around, and if you could all sign over the next 10 minutes, just to signify that there were, to sign that there was a hearing held and you've been aware of the options.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Canoyer. Agenda item number 12 is to vote to adopt varied classifications of property for tax purposes, including open space discount and residential exemption.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please. Counselor Markucci?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Oh, I'm sorry. I take that back. It's a no vote. Thank you.
Counselor McDonald?
No.
Counselor Nicola?
No.
Counselor Regis?
No.
Counselor Spinelli?
No.
Counselor Vandal?
No.
Counselor Langivan?
No.
Counselor Livinggood?
No.
Eight no? Thank you. Agenda item number 13, vote to adopt a single tax rate for all classes of property.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Excuse me? Open the floor to discussion, correct?
Your name?
Javier Melendez, 123 Chestnut Street. I'm sitting here, came to the meeting a little late, and there's, there's talk, everyone's saying, well, you, well, we're going to lay off people and stuff like that, and that's what the people are saying. And I just want it known, I personally don't have a house to pay for yet. I personally don't have to, you know, stress too much about my taxes yet. Would I like to make Southbridge my home? Yes. But I know 10 homeowners, 10, in the last weekend, that told me, if my taxes go up, my butt is out. Alright? Now, I know this is, we're not discussing, we're not making it official yet, but the people that have voted for you, the people that will, you know, reelect you, this is on their mind, and in this economy, it's hard to get a job. In this area alone, Southern Worcester County, it's very hard to get a job. Kids graduating out of Bay Path can't find work, even though they have trade. So, my point is, this is business. But your business is a corporation who should have businesses in its town, but I don't see anything coming in. I see money going out more than I see money coming in. Everybody goes to Walmart in Sturbridge. Everybody will go to wherever else. The only businesses that are succeeding in this town is the bars and restaurants. I don't see any clothing stores besides Job Lot. And my point here is that you want businesses to come, and you want people to work, but if the taxes keep going up, so much for that idea. I'm with, I'm in complete agreement with Counselor McDonald and Mr. Langivan. We need to get creative. Creative thinking creates creative solutions. And creative solutions is the only thing that's really going to save Southbridge. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Counselor?
Thank you. If I could, I, I agree with Mr. Melendez, and, um, he, you know, he said the only things that are, um, surviving business-wise in this town are bars and restaurants. Bars and restaurants, in my opinion, people need to have disposable income to go out to eat and to frequent bars. That's disposable income. We were told when we raised, uh, the, um, we accepted the local option to put the additional, um, rate, right, on the, I'm sorry, on the restaurant tax, nobody's going to go out to eat anymore. Nobody's going out. Thank you, Mr. Melendez.
Melzep.
Thanks, Counselor. Does anybody else have any discussion on this question? No?
Counselor Livinggood?
Just one quick answer to Mr. Melendez's statement, yes. I want to see a lot more business besides just bars and restaurants in towns. And by not having a split tax rate is one tool we do have to help make Southbridge a little more competitive with other towns who do split their taxes. Town, businesses are moving out of Worcester because they can go to other towns where have a single tax rate. Say, as you saw on here, it can save a, any small business especially, a lot of money. And this is all about keeping the town competitive. It's not about a tax rate, all it is, is about how we're going to split the taxes with businesses. Now, some people probably want to charge the businesses more money, but with that, you lose the cost of the business, you lose the tax revenue, and you lose the jobs that could come with it. So, I am voting yes on number 13.
Rossell Fernandez, 56 Everett Street. Just a response to Counselor Livinggood, we did this tax rate already, and how, how well did that work out? I, I don't actually think it did work out.
Madam Chair, real quick, can I respond real quick?
Can I finish? I don't see, that was rhetorical, actually. I don't see businesses flooding into this town, and we've already tried the single tax rate. Um, what I do see is, and I can speak in my own, my own experience, um, when I first moved here eight, nine years ago, um, my tax bill was maybe $1,500, something like that, affordable. Um, it's a big house. My value of my house has plummeted, you know, underwater, um, the value, I'm never going You know, underwater, the value, I'm never going to recoup at all. But what is going up is my tax. My taxes are $5,000 now. You know, my value is in the gutter, but my taxes just, I can rely on my taxes to go up. And based on that calculation, I can rely on my tax bill to go up again. You know, it kind of prompts the question of, maybe I should talk to my realtor and figure out how to get out now. I think the answer would be that, you know, it's one of those situations, you walk away because considering we are also hosting the largest landfill in Massachusetts, on paper, that doesn't look very marketable in real estate. So I don't think that's going to be an option either. Since I'm stuck here, I love this town. I think it's got a lot of potential. The leadership, I think, needs to change directions, but I do like this town, and I think it could be a great town. And, you know, considering that a lot of us are stuck here, maybe you should at least just consider some relief, you know, a little relief. I'm one of those people that, I don't mind taxes. I put in my taxes because I want the services. You know, and people always throw police and firemen and teachers out as shields to protect them from the argument of, if we raise tax, if we don't raise taxes, those are the first to go. What I'd like to see is, you know, the town manager's office, half a million dollars in salaries there, I think that's a little exorbitant for a town where, you know, $30,000 is the median income.
(APPLAUSE).
Geez, I don't know if you guys know, he's hiring another person, a paid intern. In most places, interns are free because it's a learning experience. In Southbridge...
Point of order, Madam Chair.
He gets a salary. Well, I think it's relevant. You're talking about budgets...
Point of order. Who's me? Protocol.
Protocol.
Yes. Madam Chair, we're on a specific agenda item. I understand the passion, but we're on a specific agenda item, so you have to speak to the agenda item, Mr. Fernandez.
Point of information, could you repeat that agenda item? Madam Chair? It wasn't posted, so I have difficulty remembering.
Vote to adopt a single tax rate for all classes of property.
Okay. So I leave you with one last comment. It's not exactly accurate what Council Regis says, that, you know, the levy forces you a specific tax rate. It's really the actions of the council, and the result is this blown-up budget. Half a million dollars are there, you know, a lot of other things that we don't need. If it was, if it was actually true that this council had no power in setting the tax rate, there wouldn't be a thing...
Madam Chair, point of order. He's still not addressing the agenda item.
I am. I'm not addressing it.
Point of order, Madam Chair. His topic is germane to the agenda item. Excuse me. This is quickly getting out of hand. Finish up, Mr. Fernandez, and be done with it.
I was interrupted. I was about to finish up. There wouldn't be this thing called a 2.5% underwrite. That allows the citizens to force their hand to cut the taxes. If we're on this course of raise, 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 because it's an uncreative council that just goes to the first answer, which is to raise taxes, there is a tool there to force their hand.
Thank you.
So it's called 2.5 underwrite.
(APPLAUSE).
Hello, my name is Ian Hockabout.
Cannot hear you at all.
Hello, my name is Ian Hockabout. I live at 406 Lebanon Hill. And I won't take your time, but I just want to know, what I don't understand is why we have to raise the taxes, why we can't find means to cut the budget in a reasonable way, why it absolutely can only come down to raising the taxes. That doesn't make sense to me. Thank you.
I, the only, I'm just going to say one last thing regarding this. I don't think I'm out of touch. I've been on my own for a lot longer than a lot of the people in this room, and dealing with my own bills, and paying my own way, and never being in a line. But I'm going to say this, sir, to answer your question. When you go to the supermarket, are the prices the same as they were last year and the year before? When you go to the gas pump, are the prices the same as they were even last month? Do you see a difference in prices as time goes on, things get more expensive? Also, not to mention the fact that the last time I looked, we've just been through and are still in a financial crisis in this country and in the world, across the world, all over the place. The stock market can't even get a handle on it from day to day to day. So how great it would be to live in a world where I could get up every morning and go, "You know what? No matter what's going on out there, my taxes aren't going to go up." Everything that I've come to know and love and expect in services and in everything else that Southbridge affords me, I will continue to have, and my taxes will not go up. I'm sorry. I'm not trying to be sarcastic. I just fail to understand the reasoning behind anybody's mind that can come up with, come up with that thought process. If you have a suggestion, because I've heard all of the, all of the people who have nothing but negativity, I want to hear a suggestion. Otherwise, I really don't want to hear anything else, because it's all the same. So if you have a suggestion, I'm all ears.
I just want to, I just want to respond. My thinking is that we have a budget that is, people are being paid salaries that are unreasonable. There are places you can make cuts. Yes, everything does go up. Taxes do go up. I just, my question is, I don't see that absolutely, the mind frame seems to be taxes must always go up, like there's no other solution. And I'm just saying there are other solutions. Taxes do not always have to go up.
Well, I agree with that, except for the fact that I haven't seen a solution. I haven't had one of the fine citizens in this community come forward with anything that even remotely smacks of a realistic solution. And that's, and, look, look, no, no.
So there's...
You're done.
There's nothing in the budget that can be cut. There's no...
We have gone over that budget repeatedly, but I can't keep engaging in this way. This is not protocol, okay? Every year, we do go over the budget. We have subcommittee meetings. We have people who come, you know, who don't come, and that's the problem. That's why, you know, I'm sitting here at 6:30 this evening with the town manager, and he's going over the public hearing, and not one person, not a one, had a question, a comment, or anything. Not one. Why? Because the cameras weren't on? There wasn't one person. He asked three times. Not one person came forward. So until I hear something that helps me to move in that direction, I got nothing. I'm sorry. I wish I had something better to say to you, but that's all I have. And now we're going to move on with this, with this vote.
Excuse me, Madam Chair.
Is this something new, or is it more of the same, Councilor?
It's answered, it's debated.
Yes.
And I would like to debate and just address one of the comments you made.
No, this is not a debate.
It is a debate.
No, this is not.
That's the purpose, that's the purpose for this.
Answer, do whatever you need to do, and that's, and we're moving on.
In response to your assertion about the commercial enterprises raising prices, that's, free enterprise is all based on what the market can bear, and when people have a choice, it drives competition when prices go up and down. They don't have a choice with government. The market or the businesses do what the market can bear, we do what the taxpayer can bear. That's the difference. Thank you, Madam Chair.
It's not the difference. It's, you're incorrect. You're incorrect. The response to the way a budget looks is the way, is the way a town has to look at what their expenses are, okay? That's not, that has to do with the market. And that's where we see increases. Come to a few subcommittee meetings and see the increases in things that we have to appropriate, we have to vote on from one subcommittee to another. That's where it is. It's not, it's not, it's not some rhetoric about government and what we're doing to the people. Mr. Sottili, do you have something?
Briefly, just briefly, madam, with all due respect, don't be tone deaf. I did give you a suggestion.
What would that be?
Shift the burden.
No, I disagree with that.
Well, madam, what you, but what I'm, I'm giving you a suggestion.
Okay.
Please, in your heart, think about the folks that are out here in town.
Yes, thank you.
They need your help.
Oh, yeah. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 13, for the last time. Vote to adopt a single tax rate for all classes of property. Do I have a motion?
Yes.
A second?
We have a motion, a second.
Okay. We have a roll call, please.
Councilor McDonald?
No.
Councilor Nicola?
Yes.
Councilor Regis?
Yes.
Councilor Spinelli?
Yes.
Councilor Vandal?
No.
Councilor Langivan?
Yes.
Councilor Livinggood?
Yes.
Councilor Markucci?
Yes.
Six yes, two no?
Thank you. Agenda Item Number 14. Vote to amend the appropriations of the FY 2012 budget as follows. Deductible liability insurance premiums, $2,500. School department unemployment, $80,000. Town attorney specialized services, $10,000. Treasurer Collector specialized services, $7,500. Total increases to budget, $100,000.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
I have a suggestion.
Regarding this agenda item?
Yes, regarding this agenda item.
123 Chestnut Street.
The town attorney services, does it need to go up 10 grand? Or can it go up 5 grand?
Okay. That's not, excuse me, that's not, that's, why don't I let the town manager explain what this is about? Because your question is not accurate to this agenda item.
On the town attorney specialized services, that actually is a deductible that we have to pay relative to a piece of litigation that was filed against the town.
So that's a deductible, not, not just a raise?
No.
Okay, just want to check. Thank you.
Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilor Nicola?
Yes.
Councilor Regis?
Yes.
Councilor Spinelli?
Yes.
Councilor Vandal?
Yes.
Councilor Langivan?
Yes.
Councilor Livinggood?
Yes.
Councilor Markucci?
Yes.
Councilor McDonald?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Thank you. 15. Vote to appropriate $28,845.76 from overlay surplus to reduce the FY 2012 tax levy.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilor Regis?
Yes.
Councilor Spinelli?
Yes.
Councilor Vandal?
Yes.
Councilor Langivan?
Yes.
Councilor Livinggood?
Yes.
Councilor Markucci?
Yes.
Councilor McDonald?
Yes.
Councilor Nicola?
Yes.
Eight yes?
16. Vote to raise and appropriate $100,000 to the stabilization fund to cover anticipated additional costs in the snow and ice budget for FY 2012.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilor Spinelli?
Yes.
Councilor Vandal?
Yes.
Councilor Langivan?
Yes.
Councilor Livinggood?
Yes.
Councilor Markucci?
Yes.
Councilor McDonald?
Yes.
Councilor Nicola?
Yes.
Councilor Regis?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Agenda Item 16A. Vote to amend the FY 2012 cable operating budget from $88,500 to $109,364, and to fund the additional $20,864 as a transfer from the cable operating special revenue account per town council vote of October 24, 2011, to reorganize cable operations.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilor Vandal?
Yes.
Councilor Langivan?
Yes.
Councilor Livinggood?
Yes.
Councilor Markucci?
Yes.
Councilor McDonald?
No.
Councilor Nicola?
Yes.
Councilor Regis?
Yes.
Councilor Spinelli?
Yes.
Seven yes, one no?
17. Vote to appropriate the sum of $9,858.25 from sewer retained earnings for unpaid prior year's bills to be reimbursed to Veolia Water.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Councilor Regis?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm sorry if I missed this somewhere along the line. I didn't see a copy of the letter of certification of free cash retained earnings. Do we have those numbers?
On the, yes, we have those.
We probably got them, and I just, I missed it. I'm sorry. The certified retained earnings for the sewer fund, $1,772,398. And free cash, Karen? General fund free cash, $838,226. Water retained earnings? $2,219,191. Thank you very much. You're welcome. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Mr. Clark?
Just relevant to this, on the, on the $9,800, the reason why it's two-thirds vote is that the Veolia folks had a change in their accounting system and computer systems, so they submitted the bills late. And when you're out of the fiscal year, if you didn't encumber money, you have to have that, a separate appropriation to cover those prior, prior, prior year unpaid bills. But it wasn't on the town's part, it was actually Veolia got us those bills later.
Okay. Thank you. I have a second on that? Any other, any further discussion on this? No? We have a roll call. Thank you very much, Mrs. Ironon.
Councilor Langivan?
Yes.
Councilor Livinggood?
Yes.
Councilor Markucci?
Yes.
Councilor McDonald?
Yes.
Councilor Nicola?
Yes.
Councilor Regis?
Yes.
Councilor Spinelli?
Yes.
Councilor Vandal?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Thank you. 18. Vote to ratify the changes in the senior tax abatement program in accordance with Scenario 6 for 2012, as outlined in 101311 memo from the Treasurer Collector.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
If I could, just, I'd like to, want to just do two things. One is, the state tax laws do allow for senior workoff people to come in and work in the different offices, and they do not get taxed on it. However, the IRS requires that they do get, they do have to contribute to Medicare as well as OBR, which OBR is basically a retirement system. So Scenario 6, where we increase the hours from the current 68 hours to 80 hours, the rate of pay would be $7.50. We have to do above the, can't exceed the state minimum wage, but below the, or be below the federal minimum wage. So we have a range, so it's within the range. What this will do is, it basically gets the folks that are doing it, those 40 folks, an opportunity. I would like to say that, I know there was somewhere on one of the blogs that I had hired two additional people. I guess I have more gray hair than the workers that are in the office, but they are, they
Counselor Regis?
Yes.
Counselor Spinelli?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Landjevan?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Thank you. Agenda item number twenty. Vote to ratify the contract with Fuss and O'Neil for the design engineering services related to the downtown Main Street sidewalk project in accordance with their proposal submitted November seventeenth, two thousand and eleven, in the amount of eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Nicola?
Yes.
Counselor Regis?
Yes.
Counselor Spinelli?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Landjevan?
Yes.
Counselor Livinggood?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Thank you. Agenda item number twenty-one. Counselors forum. Counselor Vandal?
Um, I think, I think it's time, through you, to the town manager. I think it's time that we revisit the parking accommodations that we made with the Edwards Block owner. Uh, you know, I, I'm sure we have a contract with him for a certain set fee, and maybe we ought to revisit that, because seeing everything else is going up, I think we, you know, could get a little more money out of that one. And, and, uh, the other building, right next to it, the, uh, former Robbins Building, where the, where the plant shop is, uh, they were supposed to park in Notre Dame Parking Lot, and I go by Notre Dame Parking Lot quite often in the evening, and there's hardly any cars in there. These people are parking in the Edwards Block, so I think we ought to fix a price, you know, for these people also.
I think that's something we should look at.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Marcoochi?
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. I do have, uh, a couple things this evening, very quickly. Uh, through you to the town manager, if I may. Mr. Clark, in our, uh, weekly report, I was lea, uh, reading under landfill operations that a, uh, Triano truck brought a load to the landfill on the seventeenth containing unprocessed construction and demolition material, and the load was rejected. And, you know, obviously, I appreciate the monitors and everything being rejected. Um, my question to you, again, I, I brought this up a while ago. Obviously, this company has had dealings with Casella. I'm sure they're there. Is there anything that we're doing to impose fines, um, upon repeat offenders?
I know that they have a, a process that it is, if it is a repeat offender, then they're not allowed to, uh, come up to the landfill for a certain amount of time. I believe it's thirty days. But instead of me trying to guess, let me get that policy for you to, to, it's one that the Board of Health has put into place in conjunction with Casella for people that do violate it, what the penalties are for that. I don't believe, though, that we have specifically a, a dollar fine that we put on those. I believe it's more of, they can't use, utilize the facility.
Okay. Um, yeah, I would appreciate that. And then there was one more. I believe this was a memo from DPW that the number one pump plugged up against, uh, Pleasant Hills Pump Station. Pump issues need resolution in driveway areas, binders, pavement. Could you explain that to me?
Actually, we had a-
Was there an issue there that keeps plugging up?
Yeah, actually, we, we had a, a meeting on that, uh, today, as a matter of fact. Um, I'm trying, I'm gonna try to make this, uh, reasonably concise. There's a developer that is, has built, uh, a part of a subdivision. The developer, um, went underneath, under, went bankrupt. Uh, he sold it to another developer. The developer, the new developer, is questioning, um, some of the elements of the pump station. Um, we had, the town had, and this is what we're kind of looking at, uh, today. The town, in its requirements through planning board, had asked for a certain type pump. A different pump was put in there, not necessarily made to do what it should be doing. And the Veolia people that serviced the pumps, the town agreed, because there are two residents of the town that are on that pump station. So we are going in, trying to make that work, when it's a pump station that has not yet officially been turned over to the town. Uh, there is the potential, uh, that it comes to litigation, but we are gonna attempt to, to work that out. But we do have kind of a sticky situation where a developer owns something that isn't working as designed, and we have two residents of the town that are on that system that obviously we can't shut off from it. So, um, the town has, as a public health measure, um, operated that pump, but it has not been operating as effectively as, as the note indicates. So we are, actually, like I said, we actually met today on this very topic, uh, so we will send a letter and see what we can do to get a developer to improve it. And we talked today about ways we can try to decrease some of the costs that we have for servicing that pump. But, um, you know, in this marketplace, with the economy down, we have several of these in which the developers, uh, are struggling, and some of the issues are, um, somewhat difficult to, to resolve, because certainly, we could take the stance that, well, we're not interested, it's, it's your private development, but we have people in the town that are relying upon us to, to do that. So, um, some of the issues are, um, are difficult, and we're working on trying to minimize our costs and still provide services to the, uh, tools, in this case, to homeowners.
Okay. And one last thing, Mr. Clark. Uh, Mr. Polowski, um, does make a comment about the three million dollars with Casella, and I don't know if it's through you or through the Board of Health, because they are an autonomous board, um, with Casella. Is that something that, that contract, you know, can we reread that, or at least give a directive to the Board of Health to look into that?
Good, good question. Uh, let me, let me clarify a little bit. There's, there's two elements to what the town, in, in the town's approach to Casella. Uh, one is you have, the Board of Health acts as the regulatory agency to regulate the operation of which Casella operates. The second is the town owns the landfill, so the town council has a lease agreement, or a, a long-term extension with, they, they call it the extension agreement, has an extension agreement with Casella to operate that landfill. That, at least, the lease extension has a value that we do recover on a monthly basis. He was saying three point four, his math's a little bit off. Um, under the hundred and eighty thousand tons that we receive now, we collect, it's a million, s, a million eighty thousand, I think, is where we're at now. It adjusts for inflation, so we collect a million eighty. As that goes up, it has the revenue potential, it has the revenue potential for two point four million, again, adjusting for inflation. So that money is in the agreement, that money is being collected, is being collected in a timely fashion, so there is no question. It is kind of ironic that the reason why we're not at two point four is because there's been considerable neighborhood opposition, uh, from the get-go. So if things had gone according to the agreement, without the neighborhood opposition, we probably already would have been at that, at that two point four million dollar number. So it's one of those where it's a little bit of a whipsaw game, to say, why don't you have the money? But at the same time, opposition groups prevent us from getting it. But we do collect what we're, what we have to collect, and to my knowledge, um, you know, there's nothing that's outside. In fact, in the time that I've been here, we've been able to, um, get Casella to make additional concessions and to bring additional ti, money to the town. Not a tremendous amount, but, uh, certainly additional monies.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Counselor Regis?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I just, I spoke enough tonight. I just want to apologize to you and the town manager, my colleagues for being late, and to Mr. Conoyer for coming in at the tail end of your presentation. Um, I apologize. I still haven't figured out how to be in two places at once. When I do, it'll be wonderful, but till then.
Let me know when you do.
Yes, thank you.
I like that tip. Thank you. Counselor Landjevan?
I'm all set tonight. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Counselor Spinelli?
The new trash collection system that we have, um, it certainly is an improvement. I, I guess I have a, a number of questions. I know that when we talked with, um, with the Board of Health about, uh, some of the ways that trash barrels are handled, that they were supposed to be replaced and, in a somewhat respectful manner when they're put back down after the material is dumped out of the truck and everything. Um, and in some instances, that certainly is the case, and in other instances, there's barrels here and covers there, and I would just, um, hope that we could make that policy a little bit more consistent than what it is, or at least the appearance is, seem to be something else. Um, along with that, I have, um, some neighbors who received a very polite letter because they put their trash out in a trash bag and not in a container, which is correct, and that's the way they did, and they actually were very complimentary. The letter was very nice, and it reminded them, and they went out and, um, to a person, they bought themselves a barrel so they could put it in. My concern is, um, on Monday mornings, I drive to work at Dexter Russell, and I go down River Street, and I see a plethora of plastic bags all over the place, and not enough barrels, and more bags than barrels. And I guess my question would be, and, um, I, I know there's, there's a number of people who have expressed to me concerns about other streets, and I just want to make sure that we are making an attempt to get some of these real gross offenders notified that, um, they're supposed to have their trash into a safe container, a barrel of some kind, so that the stuff doesn't blow all over the place, dogs and cats or whatever, and although the birds are certainly gone away, but the crows are still around, and. So I would hope that this is a continuing, uh, process that goes forward, and that we ask the people of Southbridge to please put the, put the trash bags into containers so that we don't have litter all over the streets. Um, it would certainly increase the value of our properties if we did that. I'll be somewhat facetious when I say that. And last but not least, somebody called me and asked me about a ten, ten-wheeler dump truck that used to, was, was operational a few years ago by the DPW, and they haven't seen it around, and it was a Mack dump truck, and they just wondered if that thing had gone to bed, or had it, um, was it now seeing a new afterlife or something else? They were just wondering. Uh, apparently, somebody used to do this with snow plowing and had a great, um, affection for this truck, and just hasn't seen it, and was wondering if it was gone by the wayside, and asked me if I would ask if it was still operational or what. So I, uh, and I'm not trying to put any on it, get me an answer sometime. It was just, uh, it was done in a half-hearted manner, but it was, it was done.
I can, I can look. I'm, I'm not a truck guy, so I-
Neither am I. I mean, you know.
I, I will, I will ask.
I think it's a Mack, so it's got the big bulldog on the hood or something else, and it's a, you know.
It's probably retired anything yet, so it's probably sitting in there.
It's just sitting someplace, probably. It, it's just not that it's being used as much or whatever, so.
Anything that is gonna be disposed, then we need to, uh, generate a list. Most likely, we'll, we'll probably do another auction, or we've done one or two, I think, in the time that I've been here, in the springtime, and we'll, we'll see. But if it was to be disposed, it would have to be disposed, uh, in that, in that way. Just on the, on the trash issue, um, you know, I would like, if, if you do, um, if you do see an area, please let us know.
Okay.
Uh, I did get, uh, one of my department heads came in. I went out and looked for myself. Actually, Jim Moran, the health director, his wife had a baby, so he's been out of commission a little bit with her, you know, obviously. Uh, so I went out myself, and the report was, they had thrown them all over, and, and actually, they had done a pretty respectful job. Uh, but if there are areas that, you know, we need to look at, certainly we do. Uh, the other thing, just to, to kind of announce, that on, uh, the Green Brown Consulting, I mean, one of the elements of that contract was for him to follow these trucks, for him to see where the, where those elements are. Uh, we have gone out to bid, uh, those bids came in today, so we are now complying with the bid law. Uh, we only received the one bid from him, thankfully, so I will be bringing that back to, to council.
Good.
But one of his things was a, a root audit, to, to see where the trouble areas are. So we've been delayed, um, probably for a month and a half, uh, in regards to that, by having to redo that process.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Livinggood?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Not much. I just want to respond, some people act like this council doesn't do anything to bring people to town or anything. I personally, I'm in construction, when I see contractors I deal with, I know they've got people looking for a place. I bring up Southbridge. I want things to come here. I'm hoping my boss moves to Southbridge, so I don't have to drive to another town every day. It's just, we've got a bad economy. But then I look at the taxes, how business has been increasing in town, not necessarily jobs, but businesses are buying equipment. That's the first step to a business being able to expand and grow. I mean, you get rid of your old stuff, start bringing in new, that means they're growing, and they've got money to spend, and they're gonna spend it. So things are moving forward in Southbridge. It's not gonna be fast. I don't think anywhere in this country, anything is going to move fast. And, uh, you have to work hard, and sometimes, yeah, we have higher tax rates in some towns, but we have affordable cost, and that's a big difference. Somebody might have a lower tax rate, but would cost the business a lot more. We've got people who are working hard in this town to make it easier for a business to relocate here. So I, I think as counselors and as citizens, you know somebody that's interested, talk to them and tell them the good points. Quit spending all your time on the bad points. Every town has bad points. We have ours, other towns have theirs. Sometimes our bad points are a lot less than theirs. And if you can get a business to come to this town, it's good for you, it's good for me, it's good for all of us, and it brings jobs and lower tax rates. And not necessarily a lower tax rate, but it spreads it out. The more business you have in town, the lower you're gonna pay on the residential rate. And it just, it makes sense, and I just don't understand the reasoning. I, when I first moved to Southbridge, I had people telling me, Southbridge had a habit of shooting itself in the foot, and there are still people who have that habit. Southbridge is a great town. I moved here. I didn't have to move to Southbridge. The job I had was in Oxford. I could have moved to Oxford. No, I came here. I chose to stay here when my kids decided, I came out and put them in school. I've had people tell me not to keep, stay in Southbridge. Don't put my kids at Southbridge School. Both my children graduated with high marks from Southbridge Schools. So when I hear somebody say it's the school's fault, it's not the school's fault. This isn't the school committee, but guess what? We, we help pay their bills. And to sit back and blame the town for low marks in school, blame the town for this, blame the town for that, you know what? You're partly responsible for yourself. This is a town of people, and if the people don't stand behind their own town to move it forward and make something of it, they have nobody to blame but theirself. If you want to complain on blogs all day long, I don't care. That's your business. You have that right. But you know what? Don't complain when nothing happens, because people read your stuff and then turn around and say, I don't want to go there, that sounds like a horrible place. And it's not. And I think most of you, when you're in here, agree that it's not that bad. That's all I have. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McDonald?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just, uh, the only thing that comes to mind tonight to say is a quote from our late President Abraham Lincoln. You can fool some of the people all of the time. You can fool all of the people some of the time, but you can't fool all of the people all of the time. That's all I have. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Um, let's see. I'm not even going to, uh, comment. Next meeting will be on Monday, December nineteenth, two thousand and eleven, seven o'clock, in the cha, in the council chambers. Adjournment?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?